All set? Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Foxborough's Board of Selectmen. Today's December 1st. We have a two-part series. We have executive session starting at 6:30. We have Lorraine Brew, Randy Scollins from the Town Asset Review Committee, Lisa Sinkus from the Finance Department, and we're going to be discussing the December 15th, 2015 auction properties. Mary Beth Bernard and Bill Keegan, our Town Manager and Assistant Town Manager, will be discussing with us under Executive Session, the library contract, and then we will approve the November 17th, 2015 Board of Selectmen Executive Session minutes. Following the Executive Session, we'll come back into public view, and we have about 13 or 14 items, and I'll read the agenda at that time, starting about 7 o'clock. So, do we have a ... all those in favor of going into Executive Session?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero.
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yes.
And the Chair says yes. So, five zero will hopefully see you all back at 7 o'clock. Good evening, everybody, and welcome or welcome back to our December 1st Board of Selectmen Public Hearing. We convened earlier at 6:30. We had an Executive Session. We came out of Executive Session. And the topics that we discussed at 6:30 were Lorraine Brew, Randy Scollins from the Town Asset Review Committee with Kevin Weinfeld. Also, Lisa Sinkus came in from the Finance Department, and we discussed the auction that's going to happen on December 15th for three properties in town. The two items that we did not discuss, because we ran out of time, we're going to tack on at the end under Executive Session, is we're going to be discussing the library contract, and we're going to approve the November 17th meeting minutes. So, I'll read through our agenda for this evening at 7 o'clock. We always have citizens' input. At 7:05, Selectmen's Update. At 7:10, we're welcoming Paige Duncan, our new Planning Director that's starting this week. 7:15, Chris Gallagher, our Town Engineer, is going to discuss the 65 Elm Street easement with National Grid proposal. At 7:25, we are very privileged to give, offer Bill Greeter a citation, many years on the Planning Board and many, many committees in town. At 7:35, we're going to be very, very, very privileged to honor Ray McKay for many years of service in town. At 7:45, Jack Othalat is going to continue with Michael Johns to talk about the state of the ancient cemeteries in town, and give us a little bit of a PowerPoint presentation with some slides. At 7:55, Roger Hill is going to discuss the street lighting on South Grove Street. 8:05, our Finance Director, Randy Scollins, is going to present for our review and potential acceptance of a bond refunding bill. At 8:15, Bill Keegan, our Town Manager, is going to reintroduce the MOU, the Memorandum of Understanding regarding the stadium seating issue that we've been going back and forth with. At 8:25, we're going to revisit the special town meeting warrant article, just for an update and a general discussion, and then we're going to close it off with Bill Keegan on his Town Manager Update, and Mary Beth Bernard as the Assistant Town Manager Update. So, if we could have the pledge allegiance. Bill, would you like to lead us today in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. Is there anybody here for citizens' input? Okay, seeing none. Anything that's come up? Nothing's come up in the last 48 hours. So, I was told during Executive Session that I rambled too much, so I'm going to give my quickest Selectmen's Update ever. All I wanted to say is I hope everyone had a nice Thanksgiving, and special call-out to the J.C.'s, the Rec Department, the library. If you've noticed over the Thanksgiving holiday, all volunteer efforts, all private money donated to light the trees. J.C.'s did a wonderful job bringing out and setting up the nativity scene. I think we had a record number of kids for this ... well, record numbers, the second year, but the kids came out and did the tree decorating with the library and the Rec Department. And then I think we had like 80 kids come from the middle school just to sing. I heard you were there as well.
That's great. I got to hear it.
Yeah. Mr. and Mrs. Claus came out of our fire truck, so it was, you know, with everything bad going on in the world, it's just nice to have a nice, safe, happy weekend. So, that's all I'm going to say on that. At 7:10 is Paige Duncan. Do you want to come up to the table? Kevin, do you want to come up also?
Sure.
So, Paige Duncan is our new Town Planner coming from Rantham, and we thought it would be a nice idea just to welcome her and have her introduce herself, and Kevin, you were involved in the process as well. So, turn it over to the both of yous. Yous?
Well, the Board is very, very pleased and feel very privileged to have had an opportunity to interview and hire Paige. She has long experience on both the municipal and the private side with engineering firms and as a planner for a variety of towns in our region, and she's got great energy. We think she's going to do wonderful things for our Town Planning Board, and she's going to be a great asset to the Town Hall as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, thank you. Yes, I start tomorrow morning, finally. It's been something. I think we started interviewing in August, so it's great to finally be starting and been attending a few meetings, getting to know the community, and the energy here is something makes me very excited. You know, I have some energy too, so seeing a group that really, from all the Boards I've met and all the Town Hall staff, I'm just very excited. So, thank you very much for welcoming me, and I'm ready to get to work.
Nice to hear. Anyone from the Board wanted to add anything?
Actually, no. We're thrilled that you're here. There's a lot of work to do, as you know, and as you mentioned, you have been to a number of meetings. We've seen you around town, so.
Yeah, it's not a new face.
Yeah, we wish you well. It's, we're really looking forward to it.
Great, thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thanks very much.
Looking forward to getting you involved in the Economic Development Committee and really helping out, implement the master plan.
Sounds good. I heard the next meeting of the EDC is next Wednesday night, so.
That's right.
I'll be there.
Okay.
Great.
And I've had the pleasure of working with Paige for a number of years over in Rantham, and very good communicator. I've seen her bring fresh ideas all the way through town meeting, present it at town meeting, get support, very good communicator. So, I think all the work that the Planning Board's done with the master plan, moving it forward, very excited. So, we welcome you and can't wait for you to get started.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for the record, it's exactly 7:15, and the next item is ...
Well done, well done, Jim.
Chris Gallagher, and the topic is the 65 Elm Street easement from National Grid. So, in our packet, I think there's a plan and a graphic and some narration on it.
Hello.
Hey, Griff.
So, as part of the solar field project on Elm Street, National Grid needs to install three new poles on the 65 Elm Street property. There's an existing easement there. This will really just kind of extend that, make it an L shape to go towards the solar field, which will be set back off the street. It's a basic easement. There is a graphic on the backside. Stephen Mattis, the Council who's been working on the project since its inception, has reviewed the easement and has agreed that it's good to go. So, it's just, it's here. It needs signatures from the Board, and once they get it back, they'll start setting poles, and we'll see some action over there.
Okay, so this easement gets signed by the Board of Selectmen. This has been vetted through Town Council in your office? No issues, no concerns? Okay. Discussion from the Board? Questions?
It's as straightforward as they come.
Is the easement going to be paved?
No.
No.
No more questions?
No.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve and grant the easement as submitted?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we approve and grant the easement as submitted.
In all seconds.
Your motion made a second or further discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion carries five zero. Thank you very much for your time.
I think you're ahead of schedule now.
Oh, yeah.
In that case.
Jim's on a mission tonight.
I'm starting to reckon.
Okay. Let's see, Bill Greeter.
I think you were only agenda for 7:30, so that's probably why he's on the table.
7:25.
He'd be happy to try and contact if he'd like.
7:25. No, that's fine. We can wait for him. Jack, are you, are you ready to start? You can do that? Okay.
That old boy's got mantra, be prepared.
Jack, you want to, you want to sit at the table? Might be more comfortable.
Well, no, actually, if it's all right, if everyone can hear me okay, I'll, I'll be here where we can include the audience. Down in that quiet corner of Town Hall where the Inspection Department is, they do pretty well producing legends. If you remember, a couple of years ago, we honored Pete Turner as Foxborough's first ever Building Commissioner and all the years that he served. So, now, we're here tonight for another remarkable public servant by the name of Ray McKay. But just to give you a quick profile of this gentleman, he was born down in Sunlight Farm on South Street. In the fourth grade, he was one of the last classes to attend the one-room Quaker Hill Schoolhouse.
Jack, I really hate to interrupt, but it's not often we have something like this. Ray, would you want to come up to the table?
Sure.
Would you like to come up to the table?
I want to come up.
I think the people at home would like to see who you are.
My old sister.
The night is complete. He got to refer to his sister as his much older sister.
Well, it's the truth.
Okay.
Thanks, Al.
There we go. So, in his Foxborough High School years, Ray played football under the late, great Al Stewart, who became a lifelong friend. Graduating Starkbridge School of Agriculture at UMass Amherst, he became involved in landscaping and gardening with a 4-H acquaintance by the name of Arthur Kelly, who also just helped him into his chair. Ray and his wife Lou raised three daughters, Kathy, Cindy, and Sarah, in their home on Moore Street, and Ray worked nights at the Foxborough Company while earning his Bachelors and Masters in education at Bridgewater State University. 1965, he joined the faculty at the intermediate school, later named for another lifelong friend, John J. Ahern, who was Ray's 11th-grade history teacher. But Ray broadened the world of many students. He taught with science and social studies, and he was also elected to a term on the School Committee. That same year, he heard that the job of sealer and weights and measures was open. It paid a whopping $200 per year. Why not? That meant training and state certification, periodic refresher sessions. When Ray checked the scale of a pump, followed the state law to the letter to attach a visible sticker, red for even years, green for odd years, to reassure consumers the device had been inspected, the actress field inside, where if anyone had tried to tamper with it, it would be very, very obvious. But Ray did stress that very, very few problems ever existed with any of the local merchants. At the time Ray started as sealer or weights and measures in 1965, Foxborough had 12 service stations with 35 pumps. We now have six stations and 85 pumps, and most gasoline stations are now combined with convenience stores. The test equipment was owned by the town, which included a set of weights, the smallest being a one-tenth of a gram. So, as you can imagine, Ray had to use tweezers to handle that. He also had a five-gallon prover officially certified by the state as five gallons, so that in testing a pump, five gallons passed the test, and it had a 100-gallon prover used for the fuel oil trucks. Ray and Lou eventually returned to Sunlight Farm with Ray opening a nursery and garden center, again with his longtime friend of 4-H days, Arthur Kelly, now owner of the Willow Tree Nursery and Garden Center. Trees, plants, pumpkins, Christmas trees became the order of the day, even as inspections continued, and in the off-season, they plowed driveways. From that point on, no school fundraiser was ever short of shrubs and plants to sell or auction, and at his final Christmas tree sale last year, Ray matched donations solicited for the Foxborough Discussionary Fund. Ray retired from teaching in 1999, with treasured memories of the growth of the school, enrichment of education, and the countless experiments and special projects shared with the students, one of whom is Frank McGowan, the cable booth filming this program tonight. He remained increasingly active as a sealer or weights and measures for 49 long years, certifying pumps and scales to assure that the public received fair value. Actually, it protected merchants as well, like the fuel dealer many years ago, who pumped, measured 100 gallons for every 106 gallons it delivered. All those years, Ray, all that effort, what did you change? A pound is still a pound. A gallon is still a gallon, even with a digital meter. But there was an addition to the sealer's responsibilities when the town started licensing taxis. So, Ray laid out a measured mile on South Street to check the meters. 2014 proved to be a time to finally step aside and bring his varied commitments of public service to a close. And this year, the end came to his involvement with Marsfield Fair, which he had endured since he was 11 years of age, and here he is at 77, finally stepping down from the Board of Directors, bringing an end to the cattle shows, tractor pulls, pumpkin contests, and 4-H competitions. And I would also suggest, they were the only ones on earth that dared to hand a microphone to Ray McKay. But Ray McKay, Ahern School Faculty, School Committee, sealer, weights, and measures, all those years of community service, totally dedicated to everyone getting the full measure they were entitled to in the classroom, in the marketplace, and in the community. Tonight, we are able to unveil a plaque which will hang in the Inspection Department of Town Hall in recognition of your 49 years of public service. Thank you.
So, Mr. McKay, we do have a plaque, but before we do that, I just wanted to offer up to the Board if they wanted to offer some words. I actually printed out the article. In August, it was the Ray McKay Day over at the Marsfield Fair, and I read all about that. For those people at home, or maybe even the Board, our general bylaws require us to appoint weights and measures, an officer for weights and measures. It's a one-year appointment. So, a gallon of gas is a gallon of gas, the meters on the taxis, the scanners in the shopping centers. It's a way for the town to keep the integrity, so the consumers and the buyers are all on the same page, and there's some integrity in the system. And to do that for the number of years that you did for Foxborough, you must have seen an incredible change in the systems that we do here, and you kept up with it. So, extremely grateful for the longevity and the time and the commitment that you had to Foxborough. I just wanted to say thank you, and if there's people from the Board that wanted to add.
Sure. Ray, actually, my family and I really enjoyed coming to your Christmas tree stand every year and getting a cup of hot cider, and we're truly going to miss that, but thanks for doing that forever. That was really Foxborough.
Yeah, I actually got to know Ray pretty well when I had my landscape company. He was always the go-to person when I needed that one or two other shrubs or, you know, some extra perennials or annuals. He, great quality stuff, always enjoyed chatting with you and just kind of hanging out, so appreciate everything you've done for the town.
Yeah, just, you know, for as long as I can remember, you know, pumping gas, looking up at the, at the pump, seeing that sticker, Ray McKay.
Yeah.
It's going to be weird not seeing that signature on that, on that sticker going forward. Thank you for everything.
Thank you for your Christmas trees. Thank you for my wreaths, and thank you for my pumpkins, but mostly thank you for plowing my driveway. You were wonderful, and you were always a gentleman, and Foxborough was very fortunate to have you among its employees. So, thank you very much.
When have you ever pumped your own gas?
We pumped.
So, we do have a plaque, and I think it would be nice if, why don't we, we'll present it, and then if we can get a picture with Ray over at where Ray is. So, they did a wonderful job. Thank you, Marj and Jack, for putting this together. But it says, "Sealer of Weights and Measures from 1965 to 2014, Ahern School Faculty from 1965 to 1999, School Committee from 1965 to 1968, 49 years of community service," and it's got a beautiful bronze picture of Ray. So.
So, you get to see twice a week?
Yeah. Who is that handsome devil? Thank you very much. Always a pleasure.
Good to see you.
Ray, can we get you to look this way?
Can you look this way and just tilt the, tilt the plaque towards me?
There you go. There you go.
All right, thank you so much. So, luck, guys, and one more. Okay.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
It's been fun.
Need a hand getting up? Do you want to?
What?
Want me to help you get up?
No, I wanted to say a couple of things.
Oh, all right, good.
Oh, beautiful.
I should have asked you.
Things coming up.
Okay. Well, I won't lie, it's certainly nice to have people say good things about you. They happen to be true, but it's, it's been great living in Foxborough, being Inspector of Weights and Measures, School Committee. I got to serve with some terrific people. I got to mention Vin Igoe. Anybody that didn't get to meet Vin, I feel sorry for him. He was Mr. Foxborough. He was a terrific guy and did a great job on the School Committee for, what is it, about 100 years? So, the thing I've enjoyed about getting this award was I started thinking about all the people that I knew in the town of Foxborough that I'd been associated with, that I'd helped, and they'd helped me. And the more I thought about it, I figured that if I started naming names and I'd wind up getting dragged out of here by my feet, so my wife always says, "Keep it short, stupid." And I'll do that tonight, but I'll just have to repeat that, you know, thank you very, very much. And, you know, 48 years, I enjoyed just about every one of them, and proud to say that I never spilled a drop of product, maybe once or twice, but. So, thanks again, and I'll have to go to the Town Hall. We'll have a new Town Hall probably within six, eight years. Thank you very much.
Ray, if I could just, if I could just ask you to be a little patient. I know Bill Casparra, Building Inspector, wanted to say a few things, and maybe somebody else as well. So, Bill, would you want to come up?
Hi, Bill. Hi, Ray. It's been an honor and a privilege to know you for the past 20 years. Valerie wanted to extend her congratulations, and sorry she couldn't be here tonight, but she had to work. But she wanted me to tell you that you were her favorite inspector. I'm going to talk to her tomorrow. But she wanted to let you know that, and you're welcome in our department anytime.
She was certainly special, or is certainly special.
She is. But I want to tell you a little story. A few years ago, Ray said he'd like to retire. How am I going to replace a sealer of weights and measures? I had, there's a youngster in the Board of Health who showed some interest, Kevin Duquette. So, I said, I asked Ray if he'd mind mentoring him to be certified to take that job. He said, "Sure, I'd be happy to. I'll stick around and do it." And he did for two years. Took Kevin under his wing, took him out on the field, showed him what, really how to deal with people as much as perform the inspection. It was more than just being an inspector and measuring that pump, it was about developing a working relationship with people, and there was no better person than Ray to do Kevin got certified, was ready to take over the position, Ray retired. Now, one thing Ray and I have in common is that it's all school, but we like to take care of the equipment we have. It doesn't matter if it's duct tape and rubber bands, doesn't matter if it's 49 years old. We like to get the most out of equipment, and we're kind of proud that we still have that equipment kicking around. So, every once in a while, the state would step in and say, "You can't use a galvanized can anymore. You got to go to stainless steel." Okay, so we'd do it, but we'd be forced to do it. Ray retired. Kevin Duquette goes out on his first sealer job at the Shell Station. Comes back to the office with a long face. "What's the matter, Kevin?" If you look carefully, there's a Michelin tire track on it. This is true, though. First time out on the job, he put it down, lady went to get gas, ran right over it. So, this is going to hang with your plaque. Congratulations on your retirement. It's been an honor to know you.
Thank you very much. You've been a great guy to work with and for.
Thank you, Mr. McKay. Really appreciate it. And everyone called him Mr. McKay out of respect.
Thanks, Bill.
Thank you. You know, it's kind of funny. Kevin lost the funnel on the first place he inspected. My official chauffeur this evening is Arthur Kelly, Willow Grove Nursery, and he saw me at Joe's Golf, and he's turned around and swung in the yard, and just about the time I was going to open my mouth, he hit my funnel. So, you're in, you're in good company, Arthur, and anyone have any questions? I'd be happy to answer them if they're not too hard.
Actually, I have a question while Bill's still here as well. So, I was looking through our bylaws to get some history of weights and measures. So, we appoint your position, and we appoint the Rec Department Director, and we appoint the Veterans Agent, and we appoint, well, still appoint in our position here as Selectmen, Plumbing Inspector, Wiring Inspector, Gas Inspector, Two Burial Agents. We appoint three Fence Viewers. Does anyone know what a Fence Viewer is?
Can I go out and look at fences?
Do we need, do we need three of them?
Jack knows.
Sure.
I believe, you know, there's two of us now, myself and Ernie Hirsch, and we'll go out and try and resolve a fence dispute between neighbors. Basically, that's what it's in. It's been on the books for 100 years.
Doesn't it have something to do too with the boundary markers in the town as well?
Yes. I believe every five years, Mr. Hirsch and myself are supposed to walk the perimeter of Foxborough and look for the boundaries.
And make sure the markers are still, no problem. I think I learned that in an Eagle Scout project from you, Bill.
So, we're in good hands. So, we're in good hands. Thank you, Mr. McKay. Appreciate your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Arthur, you're up.
He's a good man.
What's that?
Newlywed. Has to be a newlywed man. A newly married. It's the hog reeder.
The what reeder?
Hog reeder.
Hog reeder?
Is it hog reeder?
It's a reeve hog. Reeve hog. If a hog gets loose, they go get it. There you go. But we still have it.
I'm just looking around to see if my wife was here. She's got her coat and she's heading to the door.
Control of the meeting. I used to love going and talking to him when I was buying trubs, sit for like an hour. Just, he's a walking wealth of knowledge.
Is Bill Greeter in the house? Bill Greeter?
He is.
Would you like to come up to the table so we can?
Roast you.
We've used up all our goodwill tonight, so bad timing. So, I thought how we were going to do this tonight, but it's, first of all, welcome. Thank you for coming back to Foxborough for tonight. Bill has an incredible resume of service to town over his years. So, rather than try to explain it, we have a citation for you, and I'll read it. It kind of puts everything in perspective, and then we can go from there. This is the official citation from the Foxborough Board of Selectmen. "The Board of Selectmen, on the occasion of retirement from public service, commends William E. Greeter, Jr. on supporting the town of Foxborough for more than 25 years. Recognition is given to William E. Greeter, Jr. for your selfless dedication as a member of numerous committees and projects involvement in the town. May this recognition express our appreciation for the many years you spent helping better the community on cable access, cable review, cable television advisory committees, comprehensive wastewater management committee, Founder's Day Committee, Proposed Race Track Advisory Committee, Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, the Planning Board, the Dog Park Committee, and the Billboard Advisory Committee. As a member and vice chair of Foxborough's Planning Board, you helped develop the town's first master plan since 1971. In 2015, you again helped Foxborough outline our vision with a complete master plan update. We acknowledge your contributions to the community in the many and varied projects with which you have been involved, including the town's Public Safety Building and Boydton Library Expansion, Patriots Place, and Gillette Stadium, Chestnut Green, Lakeview Pavilion, the water treatment facilities, the solar facilities, sports areas such as the basketball courts, the ice rink, the booth building, and ball fields, as well as 20 subdivisions with 174 lots. We wish to commend your leadership, dedication, and efforts towards efficiency and improvement of the town. Foxborough has benefited greatly from many years of your commitment. Congratulations on your retirement. We wish you happiness and continued success. This citation is given under the seal of the town of Foxborough on the first day of December 2015, and it's signed, all five members." That's the first citation. So, I think you can get the breadth in the history of Bill. Jay Barrows, I believe, was planning, was not able to come, but he also offered a citation. Ginny, do you want to read this one?
Just to remind you, this is suitable for framing. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to William E. Greeter, Jr. in recognition of your retirement after serving the community of Foxborough for 26 years. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Given this third day of December 2015 at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, by Robert DeLeo, A. DeLeo, Speaker of the House, and offered by F. J. Barrows, State Representative. Congratulations.
So, I wanted to give the board a an opportunity to say a few words, and then we'll open it up to the public and welcome if you wanted to say something as well. And I'll start off. Bill is going to be, I'm going to miss Bill. This is my sixth year on the Selectmen. And I was kind of thinking this could be a roast and funny, or I kind of stuck the Dog Park in here. I know you weren't on that committee, but.
Appreciate it.
Being the most controversial project, I'll give you credit for that. You know, a lot of times before things come up on this table, I'll sit with Bill or I'll call Bill for his advice. A lot of the stuff that we deal with are kind of on the shoulders of what Bill has done with the Planning Board. You've survived for 25 years here, and you do it with integrity. You do it with honesty, and not many people have the, we'll say, thick skin to be able to, you know, keep going forward. You and your wife Kathy have been stand-up citizens for a very, very long time. More often than not, when I ask you questions and we go through different things, you end it with saying, "Don't let the bastards get you down." And I think what you meant was, "Don't let the bastards get you down." Because, you know, mostly on the Planning Board, you're in a position where you are reviewing things. You're planning and moving forward, but you are the police for the zoning and, you know, whether it's subdivisions or development, you've got friends and enemies on each topic potentially. But you keep going forward, and you don't let it bother you, and you do what's best for the town, and very few things sway you. And because of that, we've got your fingerprints on the master plan. Everything through town has Bill Greeter at some point on it, and I'm very, very grateful, and I know the board is as well. So, I think, why don't we start from right to left, and we'll just?
Yeah, sure. Bill, we've worked together for many, many years, and as Jim said, your DNA, your, you know, sweat really shows in this town. We're truly going to miss you. Your contributions have been endless, but congratulations on your retirement and good life living on the Rock.
Thank you.
I actually just wish I got to work with you longer, but through all the different stuff I've done, you've always been there in reading the list of stuff, including the Dog Park. You definitely had a huge influence on this town, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, we do not work a lot together, but I wish we had. But I have reached out to a number of people that have had interaction with you, and there was one common theme: integrity. And I think that exemplifies what you're all about. Nobody had a bad thing to say about you, whether on this side of the table or the other side of the table. And you were always fair. And spending time on the other side of the table in front of planning boards, that's all you want when you're proposing development projects. You just want fairness, and you exemplified that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Greeter, I've known William and Kathleen for many, many years. I actually enjoyed Thanksgiving dinner with them this past weekend. You exemplify, as everyone said, integrity. And everything you did was for the good of the town. And you were just, the institutional knowledge that you have is going to be very hard to replace. So, Foxborough's great loss is Nantucket's great gain. And we hope to see you around occasionally when you come up to visit your mother-in-law, because I know Betty's still in town.
My favorite mother-in-law.
Your favorite mother-in-law? Yes.
Such a politician.
But good friend, good, good public servant, and just an all-around nice guy as long, but sometimes he gets under your skin sometimes, you know, that little. But thank you very much for everything. And Kathleen, Kathy, could you stand up and just be recognized? Because Kathy is truly the woman behind the man. I'm done.
Did you want to offer some parting words from?
You don't get a chance to pick where you're born, but by and large, you get a chance to pick where you're going to settle down and raise a family. And I had a profession where we covered some 20-odd towns, not all of them are odd, but 20-odd towns. And in doing so, I got to see different communities from the inside out, as it were, because I was associated with facilities in town, administrators and whatever. And so, we chose Foxborough, actually, it's 42 years next month, to be the place where we wanted to raise a family. We chose it because it had the country look, it had a terrific, common historical area. People were warm, friendly, there was a lot of activities, there was a lot of stuff for families to do. And here we are, this many years later, and it's that and much more. I've been very fortunate to be accepted and allowed to work with so many great folks in many organizations and committees, and it's been a tremendous learning experience for me. I went from being a little country bumpkin from the Rock to a big country bumpkin from the Rock. And it's just very gratifying to have been part of everything here, and I look forward to coming back. And I will say that we're leaving my favorite mother-in-law here just to make sure nothing goes awry, because she's got a scanner and, you know. So, but thank you all, and thank you for having me, and it's been a terrific ride, and I thank everyone for having me along.
Thank you, Bill. This is probably one table that you did, that's not on your resume, so do you want to sit here and take one picture?
Okay. So, the first order of business will be raises for all the town employees. The street that I used to live on will be plowed much more regularly. There was a selling point for the house. The value is going to go up. But truly, thank you very much. I didn't realize they had seat warmers in these chairs, but.
Okay, the next item, if Jack Othlet could come back up. And this topic is, as much as Foxborough likes to keep moving to the forward and moving, I'm sorry?
Mike Johns to.
Oh, Michael Johns, I'm sorry. Sure. So, Jack and Mike had asked to put this on the agenda and basically kind of give us an overview of the cemeteries, the ancient cemeteries that we have in town, and kind of brainstorm of what can be done with respect to the state of the cemeteries.
What I'd like to do tonight, we'll give you a break, I believe, a photo was worth 1,000 words. So, we will start with a quick run through the ancient cemeteries in town, and you will get a very, very clear picture of what this proposal is all about. This is the center burial ground, there's Memorial Hall in the background. There were many more graves there. They were moved to Rock Hill for the, allow space for Memorial Hall to be built. Other graves were removed when Central Street was widened. The burial count there right now is 102, but you will begin to see a variety of challenges, if you will, how different gravestones over the years have failed and how they've been handled. And this will give you a very, very clear picture of what has evolved over the past many, many years. And this is, of course, damage in the making that could be arrested, stones that could be restored. And here we now, we move down to the Patson Cemetery on Chestnut Street, 35 graves in there. And we do recognize the effort made by Tree and Park Department when they keep these places mowed and the brush cut back and so forth, but you can see the advanced state of deterioration. A stone broken off somewhere, thrown off to one side, broken stones. There are protocols for fixing many of these. But here, we have the conflict of man and nature with the roots of the trees. But also, you see the challenge. When the town had to work on that tree to remove it, you can see the delicate balance of getting that heavy equipment in through the gravestones and to the scene of the work. But again, nature. These, we're down now in the Hodges Pratt burial ground down on East Street. Total of 76 graves there. Again, very, very mixed bag of damaged stones. The readability is an issue, the lichen on the stone becomes an issue. That's an original selfie. There was no way I could get that picture without my shadow. But again, state law requires, federal law requires, that a flag will be placed on the grave of every veteran prior to Memorial Day every year. And this is followed religiously. But here, you see flags being placed on the grave of a Civil War veteran. And the flag stands out bright and clean and new, but the gravestone itself. Also, there are many different types of stones for veterans supplied by the government, others by the family. But we see here again, just the natural physical presence in the ground all these years and all of the things that would come to influence that. Here we have some erosion. Eration of the soil would probably stop that erosion. Again, soon to be inflicted with even greater damage. Here, the small stone up against the big stone, you can see how it slipped down over the years by the image in behind it. Boydton burial ground on Cochasset Street, 158 graves. Again, combination of nature, pressure. There are protocols on protecting fallen gravestones that cannot be uprighted. There are ways to accommodate them on the ground. But again, you know, we have good growth and bad growth, and it's a tough combination. But here, we go back to some of the very, very first settlers of this, of this community. That's a very, very busy Cochasset Street going by there, and hardly a sound here just in off the road here. Nature provided the emphasis, but it would be a very simple task to work out some improvements. Sherman burial ground on Green Street. Actually, there was a burial in this particular cemetery, just probably 10 years ago now. Very, very unusual. All those other cemeteries have been filled for decades. But again, the. But again, the, you see some of the more frequent. Now, here was obviously some groundwork done to build up around it, but there's the row of stones remaining there. Waiting River burial ground. This is down on Cedar Street, just on the other side of Waiting River. Again, typical, but there has been some work done down here by members of the Britnell family. They live in Mansfield, and Thomas Britnell just happened to be the first settler to build and occupy a home in the territory that became Foxborough. That was back in 1691, and his grandchildren were the first white children born in the new territory. But some work has been done there, but again, the mix of nature and stone, but also the need to control anything that's done in any of the cemeteries. But we will lend the photos here, on this one, it's symbolic in that, just beyond the cemetery are the fields. Just to the left of the cemetery is Waiting River, the two elements that drew people here. The availability of water, the availability of tillable land, and they were drawn to this spot, and that is what brought them here. And also, Mr. Britnell happened to be an officer in the Royal Navy stationed in Muddy River Brookline. His, one of his tasks was to determine the headwaters of all the bays to which water flowed where British ships were anchored. So, he started an arrogance of bay coming up Taunton, what we know as Taunton River, got smaller and smaller and smaller, couldn't get the boat up any higher, he had to get out and walk. And that was the name that stuck on Waiting River. So, these are the, gives you that view of the cemeteries and what we're talking about. All of these cemeteries, with the exception of the center burial ground, were family cemeteries at one time, all taken over by the town, all town responsibility now. But these, these photos, when I shared them with Mike Johns and Bob Cutler, it was, what can you say? You just absorb what you see and accept the reality of it, and we agreed that we had to meet and see what could be done. And so, Mike and Bob, we set up a date, but then, when the Historical Commission had a briefing on this, Chairman Jen Savickis' immediate response was, "We want to be involved." And Deb Wendell offered her photographic talents to help us in documentation. But based on that, Mike Forensic of the Historical Commission attended the meeting that I had with Mike and Bob Cutler as well. He brought his, not only his membership in the Historical Commission, but he's on the, been on the Rock Hill Cemetery Board for many, many years. But one of the main purposes of the meeting was, where do we go from here? How do we address this problem? We strongly believe that no one group can just pick up with this and run with it. We wanted a public forum where this could be presented to the entire community, and this is why we asked to be able to meet with you here tonight. And that way there, the entire community has, will become aware of the seriousness of what we're talking about, but also, it will, by the nature of the problem, involve, for example, the town clerk's office to retrieve all the documentation of when the town took over these cemeteries, what the conditions were, all of these, all of the language in the town meeting votes, all of those things, finance officer on some of the early cemetery funds that came with these, all things like that. And it's going to involve DPW, Tree and Park, Conservation, assesses, finance office, all things that would help us get a solid base of knowledge. But then, this should open up opportunities for groups like the Historical Society, Guardian Club, civic and fraternal organizations, Scouts, and everyone willing to respond. And I bet if we need some advice from an architectural architect, we may find one somewhere. It should be noted that before we get too far into this, and Mike Johns represents a lot of the people that are buried there, that headstones and markers of civil grave veterans are subject to very strict protocols established by the Veterans Administration. And we can, and we will, address each of those concurrently with the broader cemetery effort. But these strict protocols were established by the state for the care and restoration of ancient seminaries and cemeteries and burial grounds. But more to the point, there is a separate section in the state recommendations, established specifically for preservation guidelines for municipally-owned burial grounds. So, they recognize the uniqueness of our challenge, and Foxborough certainly isn't alone. Now, there are few certainties about the challenge presented by these cemeteries, except that, if we do nothing, soon there will be known. We all know that eventually, we'll be dealing with various state agencies utilizing experts who specialize in such challenges, seeking funding, applying for grants. But first, we must, we are required, to take the following steps as it forms the baseline upon which everything will be based. Number one, documentation, including the origin of the burial era, the registered deeds, dates of the first and last burials, details of the acceptance by the town, verification of existing grave markers for each burial record. For example, 106 graves at Memorial Hall, can we stand there and count 106? We have to know. Evaluation, it includes a detailed report of each grave as to the condition of the grave markers, readability of the stone, condition of the burial area, stability of markers, imminent threats of greater damage or deterioration. Now, a detailed sketch of each cemetery would also be necessary so that locations of particular graves could be referenced for workers that would be going in to work on them. And perhaps Foxborough cable access could assist us with some aerial footage with their drone to get a footprint of the cemeteries. Once we have that data in place, we will then be in a position to make the best possible decision as to how we can move forward with the restoration and preservation of the graves of our veterans of the Revolutionary War, War of 1812, and the Civil War, as well as the graves of the founding families of our communities. Efforts to establish the database can begin immediately, and certainly, members of the Historical Commission are already pulling together a variety of documentation. But it can be, it will flourish with all the contributing agencies involved if we have support and encouragement from the Board of Selectmen. We want to know that the whole town would be harmonious to what we were doing. Precisely where this leads us and the path we are getting there, we're not sure yet, but we have every reason to believe that Foxborough history will be well-served by this project. So, that is, we just couldn't take the risk of people just trying to pick up and run this and then begin to hit obstacles. But if we can approach this through the Board and through the Town Manager, I think that the, everybody will be receptive to doing their part in providing the documentation, and then that is a basis on which we can spread on. And Mike, all the veterans' graves are already identified, and again, three different methods of replacing or repairing Civil War graves.
Okay. Thank you, Jack. That, like you said at the beginning, a picture is worth a thousand words. It was certainly eye-opening to see it, and then also to hear the number of cemeteries that we have, in that they are owned by the town, they're not private. So, there is certainly a responsibility that the town has, part from a moral perspective, but other one, as you said, from a regulatory, if we're required to do certain things in this protocol for it. Big picture, this is more than a DPW effort and Scouts with leaf blowers and, you know, super glue. It's just, there's professionals that document and put the process together, documentation, phasing, restoration, complete restoration, partial restoration. But I think what you're looking for is the first step for the selectmen to say, one, this is important and something that we want to get behind, and two, help you begin, consultants can't do the documentation, that's what we have with the clerk's office and we have the town record, but start to put that together.
Right.
Who do you see leading this? Is it the Historic Commission, or yourself, or the selectman, or consultant?
From, from what was said at that Historic Commission meeting, they would, they would welcome a leadership role.
A leadership role in it, okay.
It's interesting, there was also a small cemetery on Spring Street, three removed, the three graves were removed. Stratton Country Club, your golfers might know, there was a little area set aside off to one side, that was the old Stratton Cemetery. And we will review that, but we went through great lengths to identify that area before the Country Club was built, and we had an expert come out and actually test for the There's always been the mystery of the Clapp Cemetery in Beach Street, which somehow got obliterated over the years, just one burial. However, I now have a fresh lead that I think might solve that mystery. So, that's always nice to have one plum hanging out there that we.
Jack, have other towns gone through this process? In other words, they've, you know, they've found their graveyards in a state of disrepair and actually organized citizens and other departments to address it? I mean, has it been other towns that we can use as a model that may have been able to get grants?
Oh, yes, yes. I have that all documented, the state, that publication about municipally-owned, they give so many examples of what different towns have done, how they've done it, types of grants that have been provided. The state really has, has reached out very actively to encourage this type of thing. And I have all of that documentation on disk, it's been downloaded at Memorial Hall, it is available to anybody. And it's really, for each main basic component of what we're trying to do, there are examples from towns that did that. And it is a remarkable effort.
So, there's a template for if we're going to tackle this, it's not.
Absolutely.
Trying to bite off something we'll never get done?
Right. But whatever gets done, whoever does it, it is by set protocols. And if we follow those steps, we're going to be golden with the state and everybody else. And, but then, just as, I mean, once we get a cemetery all done, quite possibly, there would be volunteers who would want to do some vegetation along the wall or something like that to add some color to it. So, there's a chance for people to get involved.
So, as a first step, because obviously, this is, from beginning to end, is going to take years to get, you know, to the end goal. But maybe as a first step, why don't we say, you come back in April, so four months, but in the meantime, if it's okay with the Board, kind of direct Town Manager to open up resources from the clerk's office, DPW, for the communication to happen with the Historic Commission, and basically help them with whatever resources that they need with the staff's time to get something going. And I'm thinking four months is enough time to probably put at least a boilerplate together of going to the next step. And the reason I'm saying four months is because I don't want to just say, "Thank you for your time, and we'll see you again if we set something," to come back. I think it helps us juggle it a little bit better.
This is a project, I worked on a very similar project like this in my previous community, and where they had a very historic, a couple of historic cemeteries that had similar type of damage, stone damage. And not quite to this extent in terms of the damage that I saw in these pictures is actually quite astounding to me in some ways. And the fact this is so spread out, all over several different burial grounds, is actually interesting to me as well, because I've not seen it done that way. But I will say that it does require a certain level of expertise. I appreciate everything that Jack has said to it, because even the work that's been up to this point has been astounding, is astounding to me that you've done that much. But at some point, you're going to need help from an expert to.
Oh, absolutely.
And to come in, and it's going to require some level of funding commitment to do this. I think we're going to need somebody to actually identify the type of work that needs to be done, because every single stone, every single plot is going to require a certain level of improvement.
That's why we would have an observation of each and every stone.
Sure.
So, that gives an opportunity to say.
Here's all the information we have.
We got 300 of this and 200 of that, and these are the types of problems.
Sure.
And that becomes the basis for the expert to get ahead, a quick start.
Yes.
They don't have to go.
They don't have to go do that, right, yeah.
They've got it laid out for them. That's why it's so important to get that documentation.
I agree. I couldn't agree more.
So, the first step is to use the resources that the town has to get all that.
To identify.
So, if there's five cemeteries, there's five packets of, here's your deed, here's your graphics, here's what you have.
Right.
And then a consultant can look at that, and then it's an RFP process to say, all right, this is, this is what we want.
Because a lot of that initially is pulling stuff out of our own records.
Right.
And bringing them all in, you've got to fold up each cemetery, and then we can build from there.
They would effectively ask for all that same information anyway, so.
I couldn't see when I came in if somebody from the commission was here, but they were very, very strong in their desire to be involved, and I mean, they've already started gathering information.
All right, so why don't we pencil four months, and then if you want to talk to the commission, and if they think they can do it quicker, or it's not enough time, we can adjust it. But I think that's a good starting point. Michael, did you want to add anything? I know you're, you've been very involved in this.
Yeah, I think Jack has really covered, covered everything. So, Jack initially did approach veterans and Town Clerk. Town Clerk, because of the documentation issue, veterans, because we have 65 veterans among those 550 some odd graves. And the federal government has set guidelines to replace those stones.
Okay.
And that's very well laid out, and we can replace those, the material, the stone itself, at no cost to the federal government. And then, it would be a matter of contracting or, you know, somehow placing them, that would be our responsibility. So, you know, I have, through the six cemeteries that were mentioned, the town cemeteries, we have, we have, you know, veterans of the Revolutionary War, War of 1812 in all of them, and Civil War in four, excuse me, five out of those. So, four out of the six. So, you know, we were brought in to support this team, and so, you know, I'm available at, you know, whatever the Town Manager says that we're going to do to support this community effort to restore these, bring my specialty in veteran services and federal benefits to bear, you know. I'm at the disposal of this, you know, the Board and the Town Manager.
How long's the process of that, Mike, for the federal funds? I mean, is it something, we know we're going to do this, can we document those graves, apply now?
So, actually, they will actually supply the stone. It's not funds for the veteran ones. What we have, the biggest part of the work is getting the documentation. So, there's two things for the veteran ones. There's the proof of service, which the further you go back, the harder it is to get, and then the proof of death, you know, where they died. And so, the, if we don't have documentation, which, you know, we do have a lot of it, but if there's any that's missing, it's somewhere between 75, 25 and $75 to get the documentation through the federal government. And then, they will actually provide the engraved stone, or in the case of the oldest stones, actually raised letter stones, so they're, it's a historic-looking stone that it gets replaced with. So, they're not sending money, they're sending a stone.
Oh, okay.
And the timeline on that, at least for the more modern stones, is about three months, and I don't have any experience, and they didn't give any details on how long it would take, you know, for the old. take, you know, for the older ones. I'm guessing longer, but, you know, I mean...
I wasn't sure where we're talking, the federal government, if it was years.
No, no. I would guess we're talking the three to six month period to get stones sent here once we provide them documentation and signatures, you know, from the town, you know, with the documents.
Right. Resources that I use to develop records of individual soldiers, I can produce for each one of those people. So at least it gives us some specific where they served, how they served, when, how they died. So it might help getting that documentation. Some of the graves, if the veteran's family needed assistance from the government when he passed away, the government provided the stone. And if they did that, and that stone is damaged, as long as it wasn't cemetery personnel who did it, that's a very quick replacement. Because the government did it in the first place, they'll do that. So, yeah, there are different categories.
Okay. And then all of the other stones, if we own them and they're damaged because of trees or whatever, we're kind of on the hook to replace them as a town?
But, well, it would be best to do something. Now, you can take those pieces and provide a proper ground insulation. You know, you can't make the stone whole to stand up again.
Right.
But you can get those pieces together, they're still readable, it still identifies the grave. Other places, one thing that the federal government requires is if the stone is severely damaged into just a lot of little pieces, it is a federal mandate that those pieces be pulverized, just as you can't retire a flag without burning it. You pulverize those stones so that little bits and pieces of stone with some of these information on it isn't lying around somewhere, and they would have an entire stone to replace it.
Okay, so I think the first biggest step is the public awareness, and I think we have that now across the board. So Bill, will you reach out and vice versa over the next few months? And hopefully you come back with a plethora of information that can get you to the next step.
Well, it won't be empty handed.
Great, thank you very much.
Thanks for looking into this and all the hard work.
Thank you, the opportunity to present it.
Okay, the next item we have is Roger Hill talking about the street lighting on South Grove Street.
Welcome.
So we had a request sometime this summer from a guy down at the end of Grove Street. There's a situation down there that the tree canopy is really, really dense, and at night there's a fairly long space between the lights. There's a, the last light in Foxborough is quite a ways up the street. And then as you go down toward the Mansfield line, there are three poles. And when you get to the Mansfield line, there's a light on their first pole. So right now, to put a light on any one of those three poles would require the board to vary the policy of one every three. And I looked at it, I found a pole that's suitable to put it on, but I sent a memo up to the town manager to bring it in front of the board, so the board could decide whether they would like to vary the policy to allow us to have a light installed on that pole.
Bill, can you update us on our policy and are you involved in this?
Yeah, well, what happens is that you have a policy currently that states that you can, it's not, it's every other light. And this would actually mean that you would have to vary from that light, from that policy to, so this would be a side by side light, an existing situation that...
Every other light or every other pole?
Every other pole.
Every other pole there would be a light on?
Right. So this would mean that you'd have to vary from that policy.
Actually, Bill, it's three, one every three, yeah.
Right, you're right, I'm sorry.
When they, some years ago, they, when the economy dropped, the board...
That's right.
Took out a lot of lights and basically said, you know, well, one every third pole.
So there's two poles in the middle without a light?
Without a light.
And stretch, I think it's three or four poles, isn't it, that one stretch?
We've got them all tagged for you, yeah.
Roger, does the light in Mansfield come into your counting?
If you count that as the third pole, yes.
But in another town, do you have to count?
Yeah, it's a long ways away from lighting up this area, though. There's no, you know, when you cross a boundary like that, you know, poles are funny. They have to put them on curves, and the spacing is not the same all the time. And sometimes you get a big gap between poles, and sometimes you think I'm too close together. But you can see the red dots on there, that's where the poles are.
So those poles are, those dots are the poles but not the lights?
The green dots are the ones with lights, the red dots are the ones without. So at Peeny Terrace, you have pole number eight that has a light on it. You then have pole nine, 10, and 11 that are all in Foxborough without lights. And then the last green dot is in Mansfield that actually has a light on it. You know, the, looking at it, Roger and I, I think we both agree that pole number 10, the second one in from the town line, is the best location for it. That way you don't have back to back poles straddling the town line. It brings it a little closer to Ray Charles Circle, which is where the complaint originally came from, the concern came from. Pole number nine has a transformer on it and is not really suitable for a street light. And it's also very close to pole number eight that has a light on it, so.
That's a huge stretch between nine and 10.
Yeah, was there a pole moved at one point? There should be a pole right there.
I don't know, John.
I, I mean, that's a huge, and I drove it twice since I picked up my packet. And I thought tonight I counted there were three poles and then a light. Well, actually, there are, I'm sorry. Yep. But that seems like it's way too big of a stretch between poles. How are the wires being supported?
That's not our function.
No, I know, it's not your function, but...
Between pole nine and pole 10.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
They can go quite a ways between poles. Jim, up by you on North Street, you know, there's some real long stretches between the poles on North Street.
And since you brought that up, there's two lights out on North Street. No, I'm not kidding, I've gotten complaints if you could...
Well, yeah.
Keeping the lights that are there lit.
We're doing our best.
Yeah.
So that's sort of the order.
Anyway, this, it's even worse, if you drove it, Chris, you drove it at a time when most of the foliage is gone. If you drove it in the summer with your, you know, at night, you'd see what the gentleman was talking about.
You know, one of the things, it was interesting driving that and paying attention to it, walking around town, paying attention to lights. On this road in particular, if you go down South Street, the lights on South Street, the actual fixture is a total different fixture than everything else I've seen, and it's a lot brighter. So, and this looks like it needs another light somewhere, but have we looked into the difference in fixtures?
Well, we're trying to approach this, and we've got to follow up on that, because we are ready to, I think, purchase all our light fixtures, because we own them all. And then the next phase of that would be to actually, to implement an LED program to replace them all with LEDs, which are much better lights, they're whiter, they're cleaner lights.
Brighter.
Last a long time.
And they last, and they provide a much broader space of light as well.
What's the timetable on that, and what would the whole conversion process be?
You're probably talking a couple of years to do that.
To convert the entire town?
We had looked, I think it was like a four or five year program to do it, yeah.
You've got to buy them for us, which takes about a year, and then we'd buy them over a period of time. But during that period of time, we could actually start paying for some of the lights to be replaced.
So it sounds like you recommend, I mean, if our policy is every third light, I mean, a third pole, we don't, we didn't meet our policy here, because that means that would be a light on pole number 11, which you wouldn't need us to change our policy if we put it at 11, but you're saying that doesn't make sense, because there's one on the other side in Mansfield. So going to 10 is your recommendation, because you're saying that makes sense with the distance? And is it just, not to say you don't want to jump if a neighbor complains, but is it one neighbor, or is this a problem area that you've been seeing?
I see it as a problem area, Jim. I didn't, I didn't look at it from a standpoint of whether one guy is, only one guy's complaining. I went down there and drove it at night.
It is, that one stretch is very dark.
It's pretty dark.
Yeah, I was contacted earlier, it was in the summer, it was a lady had called, and I didn't know whether it was the same person, but she lives on South, she lives on South Grove.
Okay.
So, it's not just one person.
I think this guy was...
He's on Ray Charles.
He's on Ray Charles Circle.
So this lady was, yeah, she said it's bad.
Yeah, it is. All right, so the recommendation is pole 10, which is outside of our policy, and you're recommending it and you're concurring with that?
I agree.
Any more discussion?
No.
So if we have an affirmative motion to vary from our policy to propose a light at pole number 10, do you hear that motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion that we vary from our streetlight policy and prove to put a light on pole number 10 on South Grove Street.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Question, will we own that light if we put it up?
No. We don't own any of the lights, well, we do own some of the poles. We own a few. It's a hodgepodge. Chris can tell you all about it.
So we have to go through...
It'll be national grid.
National grid.
So we'll pay for the electrician to actually install the light. National Grid will come out and do the connection. And then it's a matter of whether it's a national grid pole or a Verizon pole, as to who actually owns the fixture. But we have it in the works that, you know, in the next year or so, we will own all of them.
Can you request an LED light at that location?
Yeah, it's on the town to pay the electrician and to fund the street lighting being installed, so we can do that.
It's actually less money to run it.
That would be a good, especially in that area where it's such a stretch.
I wouldn't want to do too many of those at this time, though, because...
No, but this is a one-off?
No, no, there's a reason why. The technology is rapidly changing on pole lights. And right now, they say within four to five years, every, we could put a gadget on a special mount on every sixth pole and do away with having to read every water meter in town. Just do away with it. It would all be transmitted electronically 24/7/365. And it would be a huge improvement, because almost every water metering, we have two or three people saying, my meter's running fast, my meter's running fast. And, you know, we can go out and record the meters, but we're recording them once every quarter, you know? This way here, it's 24/7. And you can pull that date out, show it to them, and say, you know, show me why you think it's running fast. And then you don't need the gadgets that we have today. We don't need a person to go out there and drive around. Some of our meters today, you have to go down in the basement and read them still, because people don't want you to put the air on, they're worried about electromagnetic radiation.
I see, you lost me between the metal halide and the LED.
What I'm saying is, I wouldn't jump to do too many poles, because we may want to, when we get to doing the LEDs, we may want to put special sockets up there, even though they'd only be, they'd only contain a LED right now. But later on, this little flash would go up there and bang, you're hooked up to your fiber optic.
We're just talking about one pole right now.
Right. Yeah, one pole's fine. I just, I didn't, you know, I wasn't saying about this pole. What I'm thinking about is, you know, you're liable to have a few people come in and ask for poles now, because it's on TV and, you know, people see it and they want light, so...
Yeah, I mean, it is, it's a pretty strict standard to reach this discussion tonight, and we wouldn't be in front of you tonight asking for this unless we had kicked it around the lot. And this came before sometime in August, so it took us a while to reach this.
No, I think, I mean, the recommendation is clear, and I think we're going in that direction. I think the question is, rather than putting a halide light...
Oh, I can put the LED in this one, that's not a problem.
All right, so motion made, second and further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
You're only 25 minutes behind, Jeff, you're just catching up.
Welcome.
Good evening. Ready for some heavy finance?
Now we get a multimillion dollar item, and it's probably going to take two minutes.
Exactly.
This one's a no brainer.
All right, thank you.
But I'm hearing so far.
If you could just introduce yourself for the people that don't know you.
Sure, Randy Scollins, Finance Director. I was before you, about six weeks ago, talking about refunding or refinancing of some of our bonds, and you authorized that. And so we bid that out, and I'm back with the results, and ultimately be asking for your acceptance and about 22 John Hancock's to make that happen. But just to explain what happened, we received competitive bids from eight bond underwriters on November 19th for $7.535 million, 11-year general obligation refunding bonds. FTN Financial Capital Markets was the winning bidder, with an average interest rate of 1.57 percent. Bond proceeds will be used to refund the outstanding bonds the town originally issued on June 15th, 2005, and August 15th, 2006. This refunding will generate a savings of $1,036,415 over the remaining life of the bonds, which is about $243,000 higher than what we had originally estimated. And prior to the sale, Standard &amp; Poor's Rating Services affirmed the town's AA+ bond rating and revised its outlook from stable to positive. And so I'm here to ask for your vote to accept the low bid, so we can complete this transaction over the next two days. And I provided a form of vote for the clerk, and it's a page and a half long, and unfortunately it does need to be read. Sorry, Chris. And after the meeting, I'll be hovering over you to collect all the signatures, so we can carry them off back to bond counsel in the morning, if you accept.
Thank you, and I know you're on an expedited time, and thank you for your very complete package. A lot of it's over my head on the fine print, but it seems, in summary, it went out to a competitive bid, eight. This is the best that you got?
Exactly.
The provider is qualified, meets all the standards?
He's got the cash. They've got the cash.
Any downside we should be aware of?
None. I will tell you, you can only do this once. You know, with 20-year bonds, you can only refinance once. So that's why, you know, we have to ask for permission from the board to do this. And this is a great environment, you know, part of it is luck, you know, the timing that the rates are still low right now, and we've got a very, you know, very competitive set of bids a month from now. I don't know if you'd do any, you know, do any better, so I certainly would, you know, recommend to accept.
This isn't the sweet spot you're at right now.
Yeah. Randy, who put this official statement together?
It's a combination of our financial advisor, First Southwest, and myself, and the treasurer, Elise Siskus.
I got to tell you, I actually read through this whole thing. The information in here is fantastic. Not just, not just for the reissuing of the bond, but there's statistics and data here about the town that are invaluable. And you can actually use this document when reviewing the budgets or any other, you know, looking at population statistics. There's some really good information in here.
Thank you for saying that. That's why I like to share it, you know, with the board, because it is, other than the financial statements themselves, all the statistics, I think it's probably one of the most comprehensive documents that you could provide about, you know, the financial health of the community and all the different things that drive it. So I do have, I didn't get the bound copies until after the package went out, but I do have bound copy for two or three of those, if anybody would like one of those.
And that does get updated every time we go out to bid for those.
No, but it's a great, you, for, you know, the layperson to kind of look at the finances and kind of see how the finances flow through the community.
Right.
Through this process, and, no, it's a lot of good information here, well done.
I'm going to give you a bound copy.
Okay, so the clerk is asked to certify, so I think the motion will be to read the vote of the Board of Selectmen, and then we can second that and then discuss it?
So read this in as the motion?
As the motion, okay. I, the clerk of the Board of Selectmen of the town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, the town, certified that at a meeting of the board held December 1st, 2015, of which meeting all members of the board were duly notified and at which a quorum was present, the following votes were unanimously passed, all of which appear upon the official record of the board in my custody, voted that in order to reduce... in my custody, voted that in order to reduce interest costs, the treasurer is authorized to issue refunding bonds at one time or from time to time pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 21A of the general laws, or pursuant to any other enabling authority to refund all of the town's $14,013,000 in general obligation municipal purpose loan of 2,005 bonds dated June 15, 2005, and maturing on June 15 in the years 2017 through 2025 inclusively, inclusive. And in, and $4,515,000 in general obligation public safety facility bonds dated August 15, 2006, and maturing on August 15 in the years 2017 through 2026 inclusive. Together, the refunded bonds in that, the proceeds, proceeds of any refunding bonds issued pursuant to this vote shall be used to pay the principal redemption premium and interest on the refunded bonds in cost of issuance of the refunding bonds. Further voted that the sale of the $7,535,000 general obligation refunding bonds of the town dated December 3, 2015, the bonds, to FTN Financial Capital Market at the price of $8,48,811.08 in accrued interest, if any, is hereby approved and confirmed. The bonds shall be payable on August 15 of the years in the principal amounts and bear interest at the respective rates as follows: Year 2016, $620,000 at 3%. Year 2017, $845,000 at 3%. 2018, $840,000 at 3%. 2019, $835,000 at 3%. 2020, $825,000 at 3%. 2021, $810,000 at 3%. 2022, $800,000 at 3%. 2023, $785,000 at 3%. 2024, $765,000 at 3%. 2025, $205,000 at 3%. 2026, $205,000 at 3%. Further voted that in connection with the marketing and sale of the bonds, the preparation and distribution of a notice of sale and preliminary official statement dated November 13, 2015, and a final official statement dated November 19, 2015, the official statement, each in such form as may be approved by the town treasurer be and hereby ratified, confirmed, approved, and adopted. Further voted to authorize the execu, excuse me.
Execution.
The execution and delivery of a refunding escrow agreement to be dated December 3, 2015, between the town and U.S. Bank National Association as refunding escrow agent and paying agent. Further voted that the town treasurer and the Board of Selectmen be and hereby are authorized to execute and deliver a continuing disclosure undertaking in compliance with SEC Rule 15(c)(2)12 in such form as may be approved by the Bond Council to the town, which undertaking shall be incorporated by reference in the bonds for the benefit of the holders of the bonds from time to time. Further voted that we authorize and direct the treasurer to establish post-issuance federal tax compliance procedures in such form as the treasurer and Bond Council deem sufficient, or if such procedures are currently in place, to review and update said procedures in order to monitor and maintain the tax-exempt status of these bonds. Further voted that each member of the Board of Selectmen, the town clerk, and the town treasurer be and hereby are authorized to take any and all such actions and execute and deliver such certificates, receipts, or other documents as may be determined by them, or any of them to be necessary or convenient to carry into effect the provisions of the foregoing votes. I further certify that the votes were taken at a meeting open to the public, that no vote was taken by secret ballot, that a notice stating the place, date, time, and agenda for the meeting, which agenda included the adoption of the above votes, was filed with the town clerk in a copy thereof posted in a manner conspicuously visible to the public at all hours in or on the municipal building that the office of the town clerk is located, or if applicable, in accordance with alternative method of notice prescribed or approved by the Attorney General as set forth in 940CMR 29.03-2B, at least 48 hours, not including Saturdays, Sundays, and legal holidays, prior to the time of the meeting and remains so posted at the time of the meeting, that no deliberations or decisions in connection with the sale of the bonds were taken in executive session, all in accordance with GLC 30a18-25 as amended."
I'll second that.
Thank you. That was a mouthful.
Motion made. Seconded. Further discussion? This vote has to be unanimous for this to carry through. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
See you again at the meeting.
Okay, the MOU, I don't think it was in our packet, but it was emailed to you right when the packets went out.
Yes.
So, if you have it. If not, this is, I think, the third time it's been on our agenda. The first time, I think it was to authorize us to go into discussions. The second time, we came back with a draft, saw what you thought, went back to Bill, and our council went back and sat with the craft organization, went through the fine details of it, and came to an agreement. So, I think we're ready to take a vote on it. So, Bill, do you want to explain kind of the parameters?
Let me just say, this is a, this is a good faith compromise, I think, on both parties, and I'm pleased to be able to bring this before to the board for consideration tonight. The vote that you would be taking would effectively be authorized, the town manager to sign this agreement on behalf of the town. The craft group will sign following this. And what this does is represent a, effectively, a 50% compromise in terms of the revenue for the seats that were removed. The total seats that were removed was about 2,052 seats, according to the agreement. We will receive $1.52 for each of those seats for, times 10 games. The reason $1.52 is the number is because that's the number for NFL games. There is a higher number that we have for special events, concerts, et cetera, of $2.55, but those, the often field lounge seats are not used for that purpose. They're only used for NFL games. So, we are receiving that payment, and we will receive that payment from the craft group for those seats. The, what this does is, I think what's important about this is that it then allows us the ability to move forward and have further discussions about the terms of the lease because, as we can see, the business is evolving before our eyes, and that, so, at this point in time, there's a lot of things that weren't considered to be part of the original lease document, and now is the time for us to start looking at those things to see how we can collectively gain both financially as well as productively on that, at that property for both the town and the craft organization. So, this is an opportunity to get that, get us off on the right foot, and I'm appreciative of both this board and the craft organization to come to some resolution about reaching this point. There's been dispute, of course, about how this, how the current agreement applies. This agreement, while it is an MOU, does not in any way, shape, or form amend the existing document. That document still remains in place. But, what this is, is an agreement to move forward on an interim basis until we can actually come to some final terms as to how we're going to deal with the bigger issues overall.
Okay, well summarized. Any questions?
This expires or just it runs out at the end of the football season?
It does. And so, we will, and then effectively, we'll either come to resolution about what the terms are for the new agreement, and hopefully, we can bring something forward for town meeting consideration at the annual town meeting. If not, then we will have to come to some other interim agreement for that.
So, you guys have already preliminary started? You got this out of the way? Already started talking about the lease, or are there scheduled meetings, or?
Not yet.
We've had some preliminary discussions. We had a couple of meetings, and we have, we're trying to start an agenda of items that we'd like to talk about. And we're trying to schedule a meeting in a couple of weeks to do that. But, I've heard, you know, I just wanted to make sure that everybody was aware of the fact that I have heard from most of the board. Scott LaCapola reached out to me, just to ask me a few questions about this. Everybody's done their due diligence about this agreement. And what this, and we're now moving on to the next phase, about it, everybody's in a concurrence about this agreement, and then we move on to the next phase of starting, we're trying to work on some of the details.
But, Bill, this doesn't obligate us for any future action. We've just basically said we will get through this, put this behind us, and then we'll begin to talk about what the future might bring.
Correct.
But, there's no definition to that yet.
That's right. We're working on that piece right now.
Yeah, and my reference was, there hasn't been any formal meetings that anyone's missed. It just hasn't started yet.
Yeah, no.
We're working on it.
And they, the craft group are 100% fine with this?
Yes, well, both sides have agreed to their terms.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure. Yeah, you just wanted to come up to the microphone. A question from the resident?
Thank you. Lorraine Brewer, 126 Mechanic Street. So, the optics that I see on this is, this strikes me as very similar to a request for the waiver of admission fees to MIA games because this is related to the fact that there is an admission being charged for entry to these clubs that, you know, it seems like it's being waived, so I'm really...
It's not the same because the reason why there's a dispute over this is because this is a different type of fee being charged for, it's not a ticket fee, per se, but we're treating it, we're resolving it that way in terms of what the value is for the seats that have been removed, and it's a partial, it's a 50% agreement, and to go forward until we resolve the bigger issue of how we charge for those seats going forward. Because, there's going to be other changes that we're going to see in the stadium going forward. And so, as a result, we want to come to a better understanding of that. So...
Again, to me, it's too close. It's the payment in lieu of taxes that's being affected here, so, you know, I understand there's been a lot of discussion about this, and I'm not privy to it, but just the optics, to me, are exactly the same as waiving an admission fee.
Well, it's not the same. It's because the ticket fee is very specific in terms of there was actually a ticket being exchanged for a seat in the stadium. This is actually an additional fee for a new area. And so, as a result, the tickets for the rest of the remaining part of the stadium are still being charged. This is a case where they remove seats, and now they charge a fee, an additional fee for leaving, for going into this area. Now, there are seats within this area, but it's an area that is in addition to a person's admission ticket. So, it's an additional fee on top of that. So, as a result, there's a disagreement over how that's being handled, and this is an interim solution till we can get through the bigger discussion on that, how it's going to be handled.
Okay.
So, it was a compromise. Otherwise, the thought would be that we would have to go to an arbitration. It would have cost, for the amount of money that we're talking about here, it would have cost us probably half of what we're going to receive in order to pay that for just the arbitration fee.
Okay.
So, this was a compromise.
Well, you know, hearing about it, I'm happy to hear that it's just for one season that we're talking here, and hopefully, it will get worked out.
Yeah, I think, Lorraine, the one thing that, you know, I've looked at it as well, it doesn't set a future precedent.
Okay. That was a concern.
That discussion is yet to come.
Okay.
And the important thing is that this does not change the agreement. That's the key piece in the language of this agreement. It does not permanently change the agreement, the terms of the original agreement, legally.
The only way the agreement can get changed is if it goes to town meeting, and I wish it was a black and white. The MIA, it took a few years, but I think we finally realized it. But, at the very beginning of this exercise, we engaged our town council to say, "What's the opinion from our legal perspective?" And then, we asked for a legal review or a legal response from the craft organization, and I think it's all public record. They're on two different sides, so, you know, the mediation, the mitigation, the litigation, all that stuff. We, I think we looked at the pluses and minuses, and we'd come out behind on that. The craft organization feels one way, we feel the other. This is a, let's take a timeout, let's try to work it over the next couple of months. If we can't, we're back exactly where we started.
Right.
And nothing is different. And then, we decide we sue each other, or, you know, we'll go with it, so.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
So, the MOU was sent around, and again, it's going back and forth. This is the final stage, so if we have a motion in the affirmative?
And the motion is to give Bill permission to sign this on behalf of the board?
Correct.
If I'd like to make a motion that we allow William Keegan to sign the MOU with NPS LLC?
I'll second that.
Motion made. Seconded. Further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. Thank you. Okay, next item is the, I had asked to put this on there no particular reason, but just to keep the warrant articles in front of us in case there's changes through the process of the advisory committee or clarification that people wanted. If it's not on the agenda, we really can't talk about it. So, is there anything that has changed from the advisory committee that we need to discuss?
I'm pleased to say I don't think so. I don't think so at this juncture.
At the last meeting, we, there was some language to the sexual abuse committee.
Right.
And we adopted that.
Right.
Correct.
With sort of instructions to see what state law requires, because there was some issue about the age in which somebody could be a reporter.
Yep. So, that was clarified with the 18.
Right. So, that's where it stands presently.
Okay, none of the other articles has significantly changed to warrant our attention?
The last draft was presented at the last AdCom meeting, and we did not have any changes.
Okay. Nothing discussed in the warrant articles?
No.
Next item is, if you wanted to give your town manager update and assistant manager update?
Thank you. The, just a couple items. First of all, I want to, first of all, congratulate the football team on winning on Thanksgiving Day. It was, I know that they pulled out a real, real exciting finish to the season with a 13-12 win over Mansfield. So, congratulations to the guys for a great season and for a big, important win on Thanksgiving Day.
And the cheerleaders are going to the Nationals for the first time in a long time.
Hey, congratulations to them as well. So, another congratulation goes out to Normandy Farms Family Camping Resort, which is located right here in Foxborough, for being named the, was awarded the Large Park of the Year by the National Association of RV Parks and Campgrounds during its annual Outdoor Hospitality Expo Conference held at November 2nd through 6th in Daytona Beach, Florida. This is the fourth win for Normandy Farms. Also, the award recipients in 1985, 1995, and 2005, and now in 2015. Before you, at your next meeting, we hope to have a proclamation prepared for the board's signature. I know that Representative Barrows will be here with something as well, so we just want to formally recognize them for that, for that award.
It's number one in the country?
Number one in the country, in the country. So, congratulations to them. It's a great, great facility. It's always been lauded as being one of the number one campgrounds in New England for years, and now it's being recognized on a much broader level. So, congratulations to them. That's quite an accomplishment.
Because of their outstanding flower beds that my wife maintains.
There you go. Just another reminder to the folks in town that Collections, Dooley Disposal will be doing their collection, again, of shops from Foxborough residents, and again, on Tuesday, December 15, from 12 to 2 p.m., and it'll be held in the McGinty Room at the Foxborough Public Safety Building located at H Chestnut Street. If anyone has any questions about that, please contact Dooley at 508-543-1389. And today, I received just some updated information from, I met this morning, actually, with Representative Barrows on a couple of items. with Representative Barrows on a couple of items. One item is the, we're dealing with the land issue for the, the two land issues dealing with the town. One is the land issue over at the state property located down in Chestnut Green with their former auditorium site and there is a, the language, the previous language had been submitted to town council, to house council and house council has come back with some additional changes which we may have to bring back to the annual town meeting for further adoption. Apparently, there was some additional language that they wanted to include in that. So, that's a little bit, on a little bit of hold patent right now until we get that resolved, but I know that the representative is working to try and get that resolved for us as quickly as possible. The second thing is that we're looking at trying to resolve a piece of a land issue that was a former state hospital land located on Walnut Street and North Street, I believe is. There's a piece of land that they want to use.
It's Walnut and Route 140.
Route 140, so they want to use some of that land for housing authority use as well and that's being worked on as we speak. So, just to bring you up to date on that. And also, he forwarded to us some sample language that the House and Senate have been working on for cities and towns when they want to update or change or make requests for additional local licenses. So, I have that here, so next time we go to submit something, whether it be the annual, we can actually use this language which we just received today. Okay. And then, Boston, the Boston Regional Metropolitan Air Planning Organization has, they're going through the development process and milestones for the FY 2017 through FY 21 TIP program and they're going through their process which actually starts on December 18th by first identifying the new TIP contacts for each community. So, typically, that would run through our office and the town engineer, so that's an easy step and that has to be in by December 18th. They're going to be looking for project, complete project funding application forms by January 30th, so if we have any TIP projects, which I'll discuss with Roger and his crew to see where we are with that. And then, it goes through a series of processes all the way up to May 5th of next year, they'll release the final draft of the 2017 through 2021, 2021 TIP program. So, just to let you know, that process is now underway and that we'll be getting going on that. There's a meeting on Tuesday, December 15th and again, on January 12th to look at that process. So, we'll be involved in that in various shapes and forms. But those are the main topics we've been working on. The other thing is, of course, that we are going to be undertaking a major auction, which has not been done in this town for many, many years and I'm very pleased to see that we're finally moving forward on this front. The Town Asset Review Committee has brought forward four different properties and folks have probably seen as they drive through the center of town that the former fire station and the funeral home located directly behind the fire station are up for auction and they will be, that auction will be held on December 15th, starting at noon time and will be held in the Boyd and Library at 10 Bird Street here in Foxborough. So, other properties being parceled, auctioned off that day will be a 1.64 acre wooded and lot, wooded land parcel located at Garrett Spillane Road and a landlocked parcel of 1.34 acres of land located off of Cross Street. If anyone has any questions about this property or any of the properties listed, as I've just indicated, we recommend that you contact the Zekos Group, who is our auctioneer for this project, this process and they have a website at www.zekosgroup.com. And also, they can be contacted at (508) 842-9000. This is also listed on our website, so in case anybody has any questions or further questions about that, we'll have it out there as well. So, it's an important piece because it's been, something that's been contemplated for quite some time and we're very pleased to be able to bring this forward at this time to get this done. Thank you. And Lisa reminds me that there is going to be an open house this Saturday, starting at 11 to 12, 11 to 12, thank you, at the fire station to look at that property, if anybody's interested in looking at.
And is that all the properties or just the fire?
Actually, the fire station.
Fire station, okay.
Yeah, since those are not land, they have to be viewed from the inside.
Are there signs on the other parcels?
They're written on both the funeral home and the.
No, but the land parcels, are there signs?
Well, one's landlocked.
Yeah, landlocked one, no. I thought Garrett Spillane had some.
Okay, and all the butters have been notified and all that.
They all know about it.
Okay, so.
Thank you, appreciate that, Bill.
Thank you.
Bill, do you have an update on the Housing Authority, on the Housing Trust Committee? Do you have an update on that? Have they met or?
They have not met. That's one of the first things I'm going to talk to the new town planner about tomorrow morning.
Okay.
About dealing with that, because we need to get that going.
But is the committee complete now?
We still need members. We still need a couple of members. People have not come forward. We only have one person that's, that we've actually, we can actually recommend. I mean, we have the town members and we have, we have one, there's one other member that we talked about that is interested, so we still need a couple of members.
Do you have to have those couple of members or can you function with what you have?
Probably could function with what we have.
Only because, I mean, it's December now.
I know, it's getting late.
Yeah.
So.
So, if anybody wants to volunteer?
I'll walk, I'll work through that tomorrow morning with.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mary Beth?
Yep, I have a few updates. We're currently happy to announce that we're using an automated applicant tracking system. This is something the town purchased a few years ago, but now our infrastructure has caught up in our staffing, so we have three positions currently advertised on our website. One is due to a resignation payroll coordinator. We're looking for two minute takers for the EDAB and the Economic Development Advisory Board and the Advisory Committee. They're both looking for Wednesday night minute takers and we also have a retirement in public works, so we've posted the public works supervisor position. So, I welcome everyone to go onto our website, click on to job opportunities and it takes you from there to an automated applicant, application you can fill out. We are happy to announce we're making some progress on our contracts. We are meeting with the AdCom tomorrow night in this board later in executive session to discuss the library contract. We're hoping to have another one solved by the next meeting and we've started negotiations for the next cycle with another few groups, so. Also, happy to say that we're making some progress with policy documents with the Personnel Wage Board is really hard at work. We're meeting every other week. We've redefined the personnel bylaw. We're creating a standalone policy document manual. We've created a mission statement and we're using an HR council to help us and those will be ready for the annual town meeting, we're hoping in a warrant article form. And then, it was mentioned already by Chairman DeValis, but I just wanted to make a shout out to the recreation staff, the JCs and our new library director, Manny, for all their work on the tree lighting and it was just such a festive, community feel-good event. I was thrilled to be able to be a part of it.
Good. Thank you. Okay, so we need to go into executive session, but there's a bunch of action items. Go through that.
All right, number one, council on aging. I move that we accept the gift donation of $50 from Mrs. Evelyn Maum in memory of Ted Inman.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded for the discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number two, Foxborough Historical Commission, make a motion, we accept the gift donation of $290 from various donors for the soldier statue.
And I'll second that and thank all the donors. It's very nice.
Motion made and seconded for the discussion and the acceptance. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Number three, council on aging, make a motion, we accept the gift donation, the amount of $200 from anonymous for council on aging and human services programs.
And I'll second that and thank you, anonymous. You've been giving a lot of money lately, so appreciate it.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor? Motion carries, five zero.
For animal control, acceptance of gift donation in the amount of $50 from Shirley Emery for animal care.
Second.
Motion made and seconded for the discussion on acceptance. Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries, five zero.
Five, council on aging, make a motion, accept the gift donation, the amount of $50 for Mr. and Mrs. Wheatley III in memory of Ted Inman.
I'll second that and thank you for your donation.
Motion made and seconded for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Agricultural Commission, make a motion that we reappoint John Hazelton to the Agricultural Commission with a term expiring 12/24/2018.
Second that.
Motion made and seconded for the reappointment. All those in favor?
All right. Number seven, renewal of a Hackney license. I make a motion that we renew Anwar A. Salebi's Hackney license expiring 12/117.
Second.
Okay, motion made, seconded for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Number eight, council on aging, make a motion, we accept the gift donation, the amount of $100 from anonymous in memory of Priscilla Kennedy.
I'll second that and thank you to whoever donated that money.
Motion made and seconded for the discussion on acceptance. Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion carries, five zero.
Number nine, Recreation Department, I make a motion, we accept the gift donation, the amount of $2,500 from Foxborough Youth Baseball and Softball Association for dugout construction.
And I'll second that and thanks for all those folks pulling together. That's going to be quite a project.
Motion made, seconded, and this is for down at the Payson Road, correct? Payson Road. No further discussion, all those in favor? Motion carries, five zero.
Number ten, Recreation Department, I make a motion, we accept the gift donation, the amount of $2,167.94 from TD Bank to be used for repairs on Booth Castle and Booth Field, Booth Field Playground.
And I'll second that and thank TD Bank for the most generous donation.
I think that was the, you send your pennies in, they count the change?
And then, they match up to a certain amount.
It was incredible. Motion made, seconded for the discussion. All those in favor?
All right. Number eleven, Friends of the Foxborough Flagpole, I'll make a motion, we accept the gift donation, the amount of $1,228.70 from various donors for the flagpole fund.
I'll second that and thank the various donors. And one question, Joe, how are we doing on that?
We're about 50% now. If we could, we've read all the other names, but I know it's various, but you want to just read down that list?
Yes. I'm reading the names, is yours on it?
No.
Oh, all right. Comey's Cleaners, there was a donation jar that had been there that collected $48. Michelle and Bruce Gardner, $110. F A and F C, Clenden, Clendeston?
Right.
Klein?
Klein Deanst.
Klein Deanst, sorry for butchering that, $50 donation. Jeff and Mary Lee Peterson, $150 donation. Foxborough High School, $500 donation. A GoFundMe that we have set up, $20 came in on that. Foxborough Public Schools, a red, white, and blue fundraiser day that they held brought in an additional $51 to what they had already brought in, which was already approved, $565.97. Walgreens, another donation jar that I've set up there, $74.70. Glenn and Patricia Hedrig, $50. Sheen Consulting, $75. GNM Inc., $100. Thank all of those donors.
Okay, motion made and was seconded for the discussion on the flagpole. All those in favor? All right.
Number 12, Foxborough JCs, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the public event applications for the caroling on the common on 12/17/15 from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded for the discussion on the caroling. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Number 13, Recreation, make a motion, we accept the gift donation worth approximately $24 each for six family passes to Winter Skate at Patriot Place from the Patriot Place Management for the citizens of Foxborough.
I'll second that and thanks for this recurring gift to the town.
Very nice of them.
Very. Motion made, seconded for the discussion. All those in favor?
Number 14, Recreation Department, I'd like to make a motion, we accept the gift donation worth approximately $1,200 for 200 one-day passes to the Winter Skate at Patriot Place from the Patriot Place Management to be passed out by Mr. and Mrs. Claus of the annual tree lighting.
And I'll second that again with, awesome, tremendous gratitude, thank you.
And just so you know, you don't show up at the wrong place, they moved it to the bottom, which I went to the top, so. Motion made, seconded for the discussion. All those in favor?
All right. The last on the agenda is the Board of Selectmen meetings, so I'd like to make a motion, we accept the 11/17/2015 Board of Selectmen meeting minutes.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded for the discussion on the notes. All those in favor? Motion carries, five zero.
Great job, Debbie.
A couple of things on the information, we'll pack it. Using notes and NEC Future Tier One Draft EIS. Okay, so I said at the beginning of the meeting, we got halfway through or a third of the way through our executive session at 6:30, so we hear a motion to close the public hearing and then go into executive session, to reenter into executive session that was postponed.
Yeah, make a motion that we close the selectmen's meeting, adjourn, and go into executive session.
I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Lorraine? Let me line. Hi, Lorraine. Let's try that again, back up. John?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
And I say yes, so thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. See you in two weeks.